Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30 and I'll call this Burnsville City Council work session to order. Our work sessions are very informal and we go directly to the subject matters that's on the agenda. And if the city clerk will note that all council members are present. Also would like everyone to know that our staff is also present in the chambers. But this meeting is also in person and online. And people can watch us on BurnsvilleMN.gov/meetings or go to Comcast Channel 16 or 859. And if you wish to join us, you can do that on Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And if you have anything that you would like to discuss, you can call 651-372-8299. And all of the information about tonight's meeting is on our webpage and in the council agenda packet. So, welcome everyone. And we have guests in the room, so we're going to go around and introduce ourselves so everybody knows who's around the table.
Michelle Collins, city clerk.
Jan Gosterson, city council.
Vince Workman, city council.
E.J. Youngman, fire chief.
Bethany Brewer, strategic initiatives.
Jenny Rody, CFO.
Matt Smith, police captain.
Tanya Schwartz, police chief.
Todd Axtell, president of the Axtell Group.
Ryan Peterson, power works director.
Jack Thompson, community development director.
Dan Keely, city council.
Kara Schultz, city council.
Hugo McPhee, deputy city manager.
Good evening, Greg Lindberg, city manager.
Okay, and we have two staff, um, I was, city engineer, yes?
Sorry, Jen Desrude, city engineer.
Okay, and she has a guest that she'll introduce when it comes to her item. And then, in the audience, we have?
Phil Stern, Metropolitan Council District 15 representative.
Yeah, thank you for coming. It's always good to have you be interested in the things that's happening here and you can bring it back to the council as you deliberate some of the issues that impact us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so we'll go directly to the first item on the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is the Axtell Group introduction. Chief Schwartz is going to have, has the privilege of making that introduction. Chief Schwartz.
Just one, can you guys see the PowerPoint? There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, but before we go on, chief and all of our law enforcement personnel, thank you for all that you do in service to our city. I know yesterday is a day that we recognize all of the service of our law enforcement personnel. But, you know, every day is a good day to say thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Very much appreciate that, Mayor, yes. Thank you very much. Well, thank you again. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited for you to meet our consultant with the Axtell Group. We fondly refer to him as TAG. So just if you hear me say TAG, it stands for the Axtell Group. But they have been excellent in partnering with us on our staffing assessment. And really, as you know, it's been an extension of the citywide org analysis. But also more than that, too, it's really been something that's been embedded into our police department strategic plan and our priorities, something we've really wanted to do a comprehensive review on for quite some time. In the years that I've been here, 25 or more years, we haven't had an opportunity to do that that I'm aware of. So this is really just about getting that comprehensive review. And of course, the work is aligned with the city's vision and the values and the priorities. So, we, at the end of the day, want to be the best police department that we can be for our community. So that's what this is about. So I'm excited that the Axtell Group is with us. And before I turn it over, I just want to also introduce Captain Matt Smith, who is taking the operational lead on the project. So he's working very closely with TAG and is doing a great job in partnering, also working with our city partners in communications and community engagement so that we're making sure that we're doing the best that we can to engage the community and find out again how do we be the best that we can be for Burnsville. So with that, I will turn it over to president and CEO of the Axtell Group, Mr. Todd Axtell.
Welcome. And thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. City council members, city leadership, I've talked to many of you over the last couple of weeks as we have started our work to make sure that we engage your community, engage the workforce, engage the business community, and certainly do a deep dive into the operations of the police department to take a really unfiltered approach to bring back some potential ideas. And I applaud you as I continue to learn more about the city of Burnsville. You really have something special going on in this city. It truly is. When I first heard the TAG line "uniquely Burnsville," I didn't really know what that meant. But spending the last month learning about what it is to be a resident and a member of the leadership in this city, truly you have something special. So it's, it's an honor to be with you today and bring the experience that I have learned over the last 35 years of being a police officer in the state of Minnesota and the last six years as being the police chief in the city of St. Paul. We, I have learned a lot and I certainly haven't learned any, everything. But we're looking forward to having our team members, the assistant chief from St. Paul, retired when I did, Rob Thomaser, my business partner, Steve Linders, our communications director in St. Paul, is another business partner. We've brought in for this project Camille Hepala, who was a former anchor for CARE 11 and has extensive experience in city leadership. She's going to help me continue to engage, engage the community. And Worsami Shirwa, who was a community engagement specialist in St. Paul for the police department, who has come in and helped me start to engage the East African Somali community in Burnsville. We just had that meeting last week and we have a follow-up meeting with a community coming up on February 8th. So during this time, we're learning a lot about your city. We are focusing on eight areas to come back with some recommendations focusing on leadership, training, quality control, patrol response, investigations, wellness and retention, recruitment, and the ability to lower crime, improve safety, and continue to build trust with your ever-evolving diverse communities in Burnsville. I reflect back to my early, early time as a police officer in St. Paul, starting in 1989. We had 18% diversity in St. Paul. When I retired, we had 51% diversity just 33 years later. I see similar trends happening in the city of Burnsville. So it's so refreshing for me to see you on the front end of this population trend that you're seeing in the city. And we look forward to delivering a product that truly is uniquely Burnsville. We'll be done hopefully by the end of April to come back with the report, so.
We'll stand for questions, yep. Okay. So you've been the police chief in St. Paul and for many years. And as you look at what you did in St. Paul and what we have here, of course, I know that we're a very smaller, we're a smaller department compared to the department that you led in St. Paul. And you've already done some analysis about who we are here in Burnsville and the practices and the best practices that we execute. And, so I've been here 27 years. I'm, I'm serving my 28th year. So I know that in the mid-'90s, when I came in, one of the first things that we did, which we needed to do because we were short-staffed back then, was to do a police master plan. But that was focused differently. What your focus is now is about excellence in policing. And I want to understand when you put this together, because our police officers live their core values and they take their oath of office very seriously. But the other thing that I have learned about our police department is that they have great skill sets, but they use those skill sets bringing into, to play the heart. Now, and I wrote this to the chief and to our police officers. And over the weekend, I got, I was out to dinner and one of the residents came up to me and wanted to tell me about her experience of what she witnessed at the Burnsville Center with a gentleman who appeared to have been shoplifting. It had a whole bunch of clothing and was going out and store personnel were running. They did call 911 and our officers came, our officers came. And what she experienced was, so the officers ran after this individual. And he, they tackled him. But instead of treating him like a victim, our officers were very respectful kind. They talked with the individual. Now, this is what a resident saw, a Burnsville resident, and came and talked to me. So I wanted to get your view as you see these little experiences that talks about our officers and how they do their work and what happens, you know, in St. Paul and just this week in the paper, what's happening in Brooklyn Center again. So, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you're, I can see that you have a deep level of knowledge and understanding and expectation of what, what you would like to see in your, in your police department. We always refer to police departments as not the police department, but your police department. And you hit on a very key phrase that I always talk about in my career and, and that's the heart for service. And we had a philosophy in our department where you hire the heart and train the mind. First and foremost, hiring a good heart for, for the job. And everything that I'm learning so far from the community, from your business community, certainly with what I'm observing in your police department, you have an incredible, incredible, thoughtful, respectful police department. They're truly public servants, first and foremost, and have a heart for service. So as I continue to learn more about the city, I'm going to gather every, every piece of information that I possibly can to best inform you. But everything that I've learned so far is just really refreshing for me to see the, the culture that you have established over the last 27 years since you've been here, Mayor. And I can see that every chief that has come over the years continues to build on that incredible culture. Because once you have a bad culture, you need a generation to fix it. And hiring the right people will make sure that you never have to take a generation to pick, to fix a bad police department.
Well, I like the areas that you're going to be focusing on because one of the things that, that I've been, it's very important for us, is training. I remember sitting in a briefing with our chiefs and our top personnel. And it's about training, so muscle memory. When they're in that incident, they can still critically think about the incident, but they have muscle memory to help them with the skills that they need to be safe and to keep the community safe. And I witnessed that also when we had a police shooting on 13 in 20, is it 21? Yeah, in 21. And again, they were very caring, not only about the person with the gun, holding our community hostage, but making sure that everybody else around them was safe. And for me, I was concerned for them and their families.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great point. As I've learned throughout the country, the more you invest in training, the less you pay in civil payouts and the more trust you build with the community you serve. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Looking forward to the report.
Yeah, so it's, I'm, I'm anxious to see, you know, your whole report, but I like the items that you're going to be focusing on. And you're right, when I came into office, Burnsville was only 8% diverse, I believe, in the last census. Is it 49? Okay, about 49%. But our school district tells us that the school district is minority-majority, and that's what the superintendent tells me.
That's correct, Mayor. And that's one of the meetings that I will be having is with Superintendent Battle in the, in the school district. And you look at the, the school population will, will tell you what the future population of your city will be. So I'm really heartened to know that you're looking at that.
Well, and the other thing is that with all of the school shootings throughout our country, and I see how police officers responded to that, and I'm hoping that our school district will have a stronger understanding of the work of our police department and that they need to embrace the partnership that they, we bring to the table and why it's important.
Thank you.
So I look to you to press that point.
Thank you, Mayor. I look forward to that meeting. And, and when we deliver our report, this report is going to be a little different than kind of the boilerplate report sometimes you receive from some of the national consulting firms where they, you know, it's a lot of data, analysis, you'll have accountants basically that are producing numbers. This is going to be a report really built on a foundation from what your community is asking for, what we're learning from the police department, what we're, we're learning from the entire, you know, the entire infrastructure of, of what you're running in the city. So it's, it's again going to be a very uniquely Burnsville report, which takes a lot of time. And we're looking forward to continuing to spend the time to do it right.
Yeah, and the other thing that's different between Burnsville and St. Paul is that your minority communities are, are in one area. Where in Burnsville, they're scattered throughout. They're not all concentrated in one area. So I think that's one big difference because you can look at the different neighborhoods in St. Paul and you have different ethnic groups, but, but I don't think you will find that here in Burnsville because there, the diversity is spread out throughout the whole community. It's not segregated.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's our experience, chief. And Captain Smith? Council, anything else, staff?
No, I didn't have anything else, no.
If not, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Look forward to your report. Look forward to the work that you're going to be doing with our community. And thank you, chief, for taking on this very important work, especially in this time and in this environment that we find ourselves in.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Captain Smith.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the Burnsville Center Village roadway and the preliminary design update. Our city engineer, Jen Desrude, is heading up this project and she also has, she works with our consultant. And so Ms. Desrude, I'm going to have you do the introductions and take it away.
Sure. Michelle, do you want me to pull up the PowerPoints? Or it's not PowerPoint, it's the telegraph. So Nikki and I are here tonight to give an update on some preliminary designs for the Center Village area roadways. So just as a history, we've been working on the redevelopment vision for the Center Village area for many years. I think it was maybe the first project I was assigned when I got here in 2018. So it's been a full-time job for me to be working on this project. So in that Center Village redevelopment plan, they had Aldrich Extension was envisioned. And so that's part of the component tonight where we'll look at the preliminary design and how, some options for that. But to note, we don't have any funding for that project. So the Aldrich Extension would really just be preliminary design at a 30% level to get rough cost estimates and then look for funding. It's really dependent on what happens with the overall mall as far as what's happening with the heritage property and the Sears building. So the preliminary design is a concept, in concept only at this point. We do have funding for the other portion. So, and the new off-ramp from 35W south to Buck Hill Road and into the mall had been envisioned as part of the traffic study that went along with the Burnsville Center Village. We had a traffic study and that was a first concept. And then 42 Vision include, kind of fine-tuned that. Nikki was on that team, so she's very familiar with that. And then we applied for a Transportation Economic Development Grant and we, we received it. So that preliminary design is going places. We've got funding, we're moving forward. So Nikki is going to give an overview of what we've been doing to date, the two concepts, and then where we're going with public engagement after that.
Great question. Thanks for having me, Mayor, and city council members and staff. Like Jen said, I'll give just a quick preview of kind of where we've been and what we've been looking at and then some upcoming outreach, just to give you a preview of what we plan on going out to the public with. So like Jen mentioned, there's kind of two pieces to this project. We've got the off-ramp of I-35W, again, that's funded. And so you can see on that timeline here, we're right now kind of working through the preliminary design of that, working with the property owners in the mall there to figure out how that works and how that will look. The plan is to have construction of that in 2025. And then again, the other piece of this is that Aldrich, Aldrich Extension. Again, no timeline set on that, but again, we want to kind of set the stage and be ready for, for if or when that redevelopment or something happens that triggers kind of the need for that Aldrich Extension to happen. Looking back at kind of where we've been, we have been out to the public with this. We shared with them just a high-level map of these two options. We, both in the end of the summer and early fall, we started by talking with the property owners. So there's many property owners and parcel owners along that mall area and along 42 and Buck Hill that we talked to. We included kind of two online options for them to come and talk to us and share this and basically where we're headed with this project. We also went out to the fire muster. That was quite fun. I had never been to that before, so I enjoyed the time there. That's a great community event. So again, it was just a chance to have people stop by and learn more as they were out and about, enjoying the evening. And then we also spent time at the mall with the pop-up open house. So we shared a board, we kind of reached out to the people that were working there, people that were shopping at the mall. Overall, positive, just a lot of questions, mostly geared towards kind of what's happening with the mall. And so, you know, part of our message is we're, we're looking for ways to kind of improve transportation and access to the mall to help hopefully keep that, spurring that redevelopment discussions that have been happening. So again, just to focus a little bit more on these two projects. So again, that new I-35 ramp would be, what we're doing is we're replacing the current, when vehicles are coming southbound on I-35W and they exit on 42 here, we're really taking those left turners and we're basically, instead of having them exit at the existing ramp, we're having them come under the current 42 bridge and then creating kind of a loop. And so we're kind of taking away the lefts and we're making them into right turns. And then also part of that is getting that direct access then to Buck Hill Road and right into the mall area. So again, there's kind of two features here. And I'll talk a little bit more detail about that intersection and what that looks like. But again, the, the goal of this is to improve operations on 42 and also then, like I said, increase access off of 35 to the mall area. So like I said, we have this new ramp that comes off at, the part of it'll go up to 42, but part of it'll go down to a roundabout on Buck Hill. So again, Buck Hill will continue to be a north-south road. That roundabout will, you know, offer the opportunity to keep moving north and south on Buck Hill, but then also offer that opportunity to get into the mall area. This portion of the project does require some right-of-way or permanent easement needs, partly with one parcel on the mall here. So again, the city staff is currently discussing with them. We're, we're basically working through what that need is and continuing those discussions with them. We look closely at the 42 intersection. So again, the change here, removing those left turns from the southbound, make, turning them into right turns from the Buck Hill section. The one new benefit that we're able to add here is a new pedestrian crossing. So currently, there is no crosswalk, there is no signal system for pedestrians there. The new improvement here, again, one part of this is a no-left turn, but I'll talk a little bit about that. But what that does provide is that those pedestrians are really only crossing through traffic on 42. We're kind of removing a lot of that left turns that they're basically in conflict with. So looking for this being a good opportunity for people to cross 42 with fewer conflicts. Again, the benefit of this is less delay on 42 and for people on Buck Hill. The only disadvantage is we do have to remove the left turn. So people who are coming northbound on Buck Hill will no longer be able to make a left turn and head westbound on 42. However, there's current configuration in your roadway system that allows for that movement to happen. So at this point, before the completion of the new Aldrich alignment, people would be able to use Burnhaven and South Cross to continue and go westbound on 42 from Buck Hill. Or also use, if their destination is the mall or directly north of the mall, they could use the mall, Ring Road and Aldrich to get to the north. When Aldrich is in place, that'll be another option. And then with the roundabout, so there's a couple of different options in the future that they will to use that are very similar to the current travel time and distance that they have now. It'll be changed with this new intersection improvements at 42. And then, like I said, the second piece of this that we're looking at is this new Aldrich roadway. We, we started out, the project team and the PMT, looking at different options that's out there. You know, we wanted to consider what this is going to look like in the future. Obviously, when you look at it now, you know, it's running through this parking lot. That's not the vision that came out of that Burnsville, Burnsville Center Village recommendations, you know, in the future, along with the mall property there. There, there's plans for some redevelopment. So again, thinking through what that looks like for additional retail and commercial that could be along this corridor, but also recognizing we wanted to accommodate all modes. So it's not just the vehicles, but we also want to make sure we're providing quality and safe accommodations for pedestrians and bicyclists. So like I said, we started with some ideas of the different amenities that could be part of this roadway. We looked at the traffic volumes and what that would mean. And we came to a current recommendation. This is really what the focus of our outreach that we plan on doing the next couple of months is, is getting feedback from the public on this recommendation. So on the current right-of-way that has been preserved, like I said, I think Jen mentioned, you know, there is right-of-way that's preserved for this except for the Sears building. We would be able to really create a great space here through the, through the property. So looking at this, what this is showing is very wide sidewalks. We've got 12-feet sidewalk trails on the outside. We kind of started on the outside and worked our way in. We're, we're able to provide about 16-feet of boulevard between that sidewalk and the roadway. And also with the traffic volumes that are anticipated, we really, a two-lane divided road, or two-lane divided roadway is really appropriate. So that's showing one lane in each direction, but then also with some turn lanes at the major intersections. So that should easily accommodate and have the capacity needed for the roadway. So again, it allows us to have a lot of great green space when we don't need those turn lanes. So that meeting in the center there can really be a, a great green space as you go up and down the corridor. It also offers flexibility for future needs. You know, that boulevard space between the sidewalk and the road could be utilized for benches or scooter parking or whatever the future might need for transportation needs for both pedestrians and bicyclists and other users of the road.
Right.
And then we really are looking even further into the future. There were multiple recommendations, both from that Burnsville Center Village study and the Highway 42 study, that really looked at the potential to grade-separate options through here. So the first one that came out of the Village study was, you know, can we create a space for pedestrians, either a tunnel or a bridge that would allow them to cross 42 and not be at grade with the traffic? We looked at ways to grade-separate Aldrich. And so right now, we're in, kind of in the middle of the process of really vetting a bunch of different options. So like I said, there's a few that came through out of these studies, but we're looking at multiple ones and really analyzing them. None of them are easy solutions. There's impacts and potential, you know, changes that need to happen with access and such with all of them. So that's, we really want to spend time to make sure that we're looking at all of those impacts and benefits to really... those impacts and benefits to really find an answer that we can move forward with. So as we look at the outreach, again, we're kind of following similar patterns as we did last time we went out to the public. So we're starting with those property owners. So we plan on having individual meetings and group meetings with those property owners starting the last week here in January. Those will be virtual online meetings. We'll share similar information that I'm sharing with you tonight with them and get some feedback from them again on what we're looking at. We plan on reaching out to the public with newsletter ads and social media ads, really wanting to direct them to what we're going to have on the website, which is going to be a virtual open house. And so it's going to include some of the stuff that I'm sharing with you today with a little bit more animation and graphics to really make sure people understand what we're trying to do here with these two projects. That online open house, the plan is to launch it the first week in February. Like I said, it'll include visuals and animation to make sure people understand some of those traffic pattern changes with Buck Hill that I was talking about and those type of things. And we really, the feedback we're trying to get is to make sure we're understanding their needs in terms of Aldrich. You know, are we making the right choices there with how we're using that space that we have in the right-of-way in terms of the travel lanes, the sidewalk space, the boulevards, making sure that we're not missing something that the public might want in terms of needs on that roadway. So with that, I'll turn it over if there's any questions, Mayor, or others.
Okay. Vince?
Thank you for the presentation. Can we go back to the slide that is showing the new route on Southcross and Burnhaven? So we're removing the westbound turn lane on 42 and redirecting traffic?
Okay, so I should clarify that. If you're on 42 and want to go southbound on Buck Hill, that movement remains. This is only for people who are coming northbound on Buck Hill and wanting to turn left to go westbound onto 42. So the westbound to southbound movement at that intersection remains.
And this new route then eliminates going through as many traffic signals as if you were to go north to 42 and then you'd have multiple intersections with traffic signals. We'd sign it right at that decision point and direct people to kind of bypass the mall traffic by going, to go westbound. But if you wanted to go into the mall, you could certainly continue north and into the mall through the roundabout.
You would not be able to get to 42 then, from, without going on Burnhaven?
To go west. To go east, you can. You would be able to take a right.
And if I'm coming southbound on 35, exiting on 42, that is not changed?
All access. You could go east or, so if you want to go back to the other image, that one. So if you wanted, if you're coming south on 35, if you wanted to take a right, you go up the ramp like you do today and there'll be a right turn lane. And that's the only movement from that point. If you wanted to go south on Buck Hill, you go under 42 and loop through the roundabout and continue south. If you wanted to go east on 42, you go to the northern loop and loop up and then you take a right onto 42.
And if I wanted to go west?
You would go on the ramp like you go today and take a right.
Okay. All right, that was what I was needing. Because when I first saw that, I thought if you wanted to go west on 42, you had to take Burnhaven, but.
No, no. It's only if you're going north on Buck Hill Road, then you have to do that kind of around-the-mall route. But otherwise, that's the only change.
You asked the question that I wanted clarification when you're coming south and you're exiting for 42. I want to make sure that I can have those, I can go, I can go left or right there. And I understand from what you're saying right now that you can still do that movement.
But it'd be a right, though that's one of the benefits is that there's no left turns. You're just taking a right if you're coming south on 42, or sorry, on 35, and you come up the ramp, you're taking a right. If you're going through the loop, you're taking a right. So either direction, you don't have to wait for a left turn if you can envision going through the loop.
You can't go eastbound off the off-ramp, going south on 35. When you get to the top, all eight of those lanes are only a right turn.
Yep. So then you'll go underneath.
Loop then, going under and then go through the roundabout and then come up and then take, go east?
You don't need to go through the roundabout. So there's another loop that's just north of there.
Okay, I see that looped.
We don't have a, I don't think.
Yeah.
Point. We just got a loop and take a right.
Yeah.
Where?
Just, just north of there.
Yes, we actually have it split. So when you're coming down 35 and you take that exit, you're going to have a decision. You can either go eastbound on 42 and you're going to take the first little loop that shows up there. Thank you, Ryan. And like I said, it's, it just, it functions as a loop.
Yeah, yeah, not the tradition, not the existing, like six, seriously, six lanes.
Right.
Right? That's only going to be a right turn only.
We're showing there those lanes kind of disappear.
Yeah, and that's, that's the clarification that Vince is looking at and what I wanted to understand. So you, when you take that exit on the ramp and you're going south, you can go west, but if you want to go east, you're going to take that first loop and then you go, okay.
Do we not take the traditional?
Traffic's coming from down Buck Hill, going north?
We do, yeah. I don't have it offhand here, but we do have it in the.
You're explaining this to me, I'm thinking, that's the route I take most of the time anyways, just to stay off of 42.
Exactly, yeah.
Just bounce over.
It's a small number. It is, you know, that's one of the lowest movements in the intersection is that north to westbound.
With this option and with the new access, you know, routing people on Burnhaven, signage is important. And so that's, when we get into final design, we'll be working through, making sure that there's appropriate signage in all of those directions to get people where they need to go. The decision point of where you want to be is much further north on 35. And those signs will have to get people in the right lanes.
Really, there's just a single eastbound exit, which is the current one. And then there's a single eastbound, but you could actually access the mall too. So it's, but they still, eastbound traffic has to take that second new one. So there'll be some significant signage in advance of either of those exits, right?
Right.
That makes sense.
And all of this has the funding, we have the funding for this activity.
Yes, so we received the TED grant and then the match we have in the CIP and Dakota County is splitting the match with us.
I saw that in the background.
Uncongested in a big way.
One other major benefit of this is right now 42 suffers from massive use of the left lanes. This automatically puts all these turners in the right lane. So it gets them down to the right lane where we would want to have the better lane usage lane.
More efficient and safer.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, Kara?
Could you go back to the slide that has like the sidewalk and the boulevard and that type of thing?
Yeah, the Aldrich, that's the other one I wanted to take a look at. That.
So my question on that is, my preference may not be for us to councils, they'll have to speak up, is anytime we can, we're doing a trail-type system rather than a sidewalk and then having bicyclists on the road with cars and then with a turn lane. So when I'm looking at this and I'm seeing a great wide sidewalk, which is fantastic, love it, but I'm seeing our bicyclists then on the road with cars.
It would be a choice. So it's wide enough that they can be on the 12-foot trail, but some cyclists would prefer to be on the road. So we're giving, in this design, we're giving an option. We wouldn't, we would, you know, I think, I've heard the council's preference before and so, but we also have, not in 2023, but the future potential for scooters. And I think we would want those scooters to be in a lane because they can go 20 miles per hour. So keeping the flexibility to have the ability to be on street if you'd like or not, we have both options.
Now, this is on the south.
Not clear on the scooters, though, frankly. Because although they can go, they can go 20 miles per hour, I know people can book it on a bike as well. And I'm thinking more of the unprotected nature of the person, you know, on the bike or on the scooter or on, on an electric bike, because there's electric bikes too. So, you know, you know, and my concern on these is, is just that unprotected nature of someone sharing the road, you know, with cars and trucks and all that kind of stuff. So, and thank you for saying that, you know, that they'll have a choice. I do think by striping it, there will be an assumption on the part of pedestrians and bicyclists of where they're supposed to be. And there might be some conversation amongst them if someone is where they think they're not supposed to be, even if they are allowed there. So just the visual cue, you know, if we can just think that through.
Yeah, and the other part about having a wider street, if we made it a normal 12 or 13-foot lane, that doesn't give a lot of access for emergency vehicle bypassing and such. So another reason to stripe it is also to not have this massive lane. It's to keep people where they're supposed to be. Speeds here would be low. And so I think we could accomplish so that, there are cyclists who prefer the road.
Sure.
And so, and for safety purposes, because they are going so fast that they don't want to be weaving around pedestrians or even slow bicyclists. So I appreciate the comment. We do, no matter what, we would have to keep it as a wide drive surface to provide for the, for the emergency vehicle.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that one. Thank you very much.
So, as I'm looking at this, this design is for the south side of 42?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Because there is, you don't have all of this width or land for the north side. You've got businesses right there.
On the north side, we have two lanes in each direction and a sidewalk already. Pretty big boulevards on the north side, but we aren't proposing to make any changes. This is a concept preliminary design just for that Aldrich extension, south of 42 to connect up to Buck Hill Road.
Okay. Okay, it makes sense on the south side. And you're right, there are four lanes. And how we're going to do that on the, on the north side, it, you know, needs a lot of input from the, the owners of those strip centers and malls and all of that.
We're not proposing it on the north side and so we haven't.
So this is, this is just the south side?
Because it's brand-new construction and through a brand-new right-of-way. We have probably something that most suburbs don't have is the ability to make a street how we want it. So this is that right-of-way piece that's on the south side, only occurring with redevelopment, only occurring if the Sears site redevelops. So it's a future, future concept plan.
Yeah, and that's good. What I do like is that, as I said earlier, we're setting the stage, but we're also going to be show-ready. Having all of the plans and making sure that we can move as soon as we do that. And as soon as, as Jeff and his team starts building the Center Village, connecting with developers and property owners and see where we're going to go, so. But it's great that you've got a plan in. But the thing is, the only way we can also build that is when we get, when we certify a district and begin to get some money.
Yeah, a lot of things have to happen before we can build this. Like I said, there is no funding for it. But to your point, Madam Mayor, we want to be ready when the, when the time comes so that we're not doing this in a future year and then everything is pushed back three, four, or five years as we go through the design and all of that. So we want to be ready.
To Jen's point as well, Mayor and Council, this preliminary design allows us the opportunity, affords us the opportunity to better understand what costs might look like for the construction of these projects, so.
And that's a good thing and that's why I like that Commissioner Turner is here, because we might need some funds from the Livable Community Fund and also the Transportation Fund from the council to help with the redevelopment. So, because I know that when we did the heart of the city, we got some money from there to help in that regard. So, well, you know, I'm glad that you're here so that you're hearing all of this. And it's another way for us to make sure that we have all these pockets of money that we can go to.
Given that Sears is for sale and previously Saratage was willing to work with us on redevelopment, we have no guarantee the new owner will be approaching it in the same way. If, if it were not to be redeveloped, is there an alternative plan for Aldrich to go through that property at all?
There is not an alternative plan at this point to go around, but we do have the northern piece, north of, we have the right-of-way north of the building. Right now, the right-of-way kind of ends at the Sears and then picks up again on the south side. So we could look at some, some potential options for that, depending on what the long-term vision of the council is. If you want to have us look at that, we can.
It, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but it could be in front of us if the new owner doesn't want to. Maybe he wants to blow out all new windows and keep the existing building and put something inside, then, you know, we'll have to have a conversation with him.
Councilor, Councilor Vickily, members of the council, we have had internal staff conversations about alternatives should a new property owner renovate the existing box as an example. And there are no plans, to Jen's point, right now, but certainly we would be coming back to you with alternatives based on that redevelopment pattern, should that be the way that the market would go.
Is there anything else, Nikki and Jen?
No, I think we're gonna.
Ryan?
Just to, Councilor Scholes' point, I wonder if it's, if we could just, as opposed to terming in a sidewalk, I wonder if we could call it a multi-use trail in the drawing, because it's two feet wider than most of our trails.
Yeah.
So if we just say.
Show it differently.
We'll just rename it multi-use trail.
That's right, just.
And Ryan, a good question. I think clarity from the council, the council's perspective, Jen makes a very good point, right? We're in a unique situation where certainly the configuration you're looking at, others that we might compare ourselves to don't have this type of opportunity. So if the council has a preference to do something like Ryan is suggesting, certainly now is the opportunity for that feedback, so.
Multi-use trail makes a lot of sense to me.
And striping it. Stripping it to separate.
And strapping, yeah, because there are a lot of people, you can have trails. I see that on, on a traveler's trail. They use that new bike trail. Okay. Is there anything else that you need from us?
No, we'll be back again with a final preliminary design to close out the project.
Okay, very nicely done, ladies. Thank you. Brandon, the next one is yours, but before you give your report, Brian, I want to commend your staff during a very difficult snowstorm and the hard work that they put into it. And they worked long hours. So please extend our appreciation for the work that they've done. And I know, I know because you all saw some of the emails I received, and they weren't about your work, but they wanted our help for, you know, different businesses or HOAs. And they said, heck, I live in an HOA and we're responsible for removing the snow and also to do all of that work so that they need to do that. And our staff is so busy with making sure that the roads are safe, the snow is removed so that when people get up in the morning, they are able to, to drive safely to work and to the destination. So please, I know that they, they work very hard. And so appreciate all that they do and please extend that appreciation to all of them. I mean, because, and everybody, I mean, I saw the ones about the cul-de-sacs and you guys were in there. Dan T was in there right away fixing those and.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm very proud to be part of the team that is completing all its normal work, 70, 80-hour weeks and at 2:00 AM in the morning, three or four nights in a row, making it all happen. And they did just a fabulous job, very well-coordinated, executed, and like I said. executed, and I couldn't be prouder of the work we did. Are people still gonna have concerns? Of course, because everyone wants to go about their life like the snowstorm isn't happening, right? So, we're doing everything we can to fight it, fight the snow when it's there, and this week, we are, you've probably seen trucks around town hauling snow around, we're trying to get all prepped. We don't know, there could be another one on the horizon, and we gotta be ready to go, so, it's really appreciated that you bring that up, and we, I'm very proud to be part of this team, and I will make sure that they are getting appreciation.
And you know what you guys are doing? You're clearing the sightlines, you're taking all that snow that was built up there, and you're taking, you're moving that snow so the sightlines are there, and I recognize that, so thank the, the team, I mean, I do know that when you do the first pass, you know, the snow's gonna get up onto the sidewalks and, and, and then they clean that out, and then they go for the second pass, and they're cleaning it out, and so they're doing a lot of work, and, but the thing that I've heard from people, because when the city put out a notice on Facebook about, you know, the time that our crew is out making sure that the roads are safe, you know, I hear back from a lot of folks that they appreciate that, that the roads are travelable, travelable, and, and they can get to work on time. We did have one who, oh, but that was Southwest Burnsville, that's what you're gonna be talking about now.
Indeed, thanks for, thanks for providing that time, but we appreciate that.
But thank you, I know it, and thank you for getting on that also right away.
Yeah, well, we really appreciate the thanks, and we know the council and the mayor do appreciate everything we're doing, we hear great things, so we, like I said, we're very proud of the work that we're doing, thank you for the recognition, and I'll make sure that our folks hear about it.
Please let them know when you have a conversation with them.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, and now...
All right.
I know you tried, I, because you and I got this email, well, no, it was Dan T. and me.
Yep, right, okay, Southwest Burnsville Improvement Policy Discussion, so we're here tonight just to provide you some opportunities based upon things that we've been hearing, and so we're just looking to see if the council has an interest in us investigating this policy, which is the Southwest Burnsville Improvement Policy. There's two major aspects we talked to tonight about utility extensions and roadway paving. On the utility extension policy aspect, we'll go into some of the benefits, and BJ's here to help talk about some of those benefits as well, so thank you. And then we go into, there's two different ways that this can be looked at, both developer wants to come in, and then individual requests, we're gonna focus more on the individual on this particular discussion. Public safety benefits, BJ, do you want to take the first bullet there?
Sure. Thanks, Madam Mayor and Council, so one of the, the benefits of this is, is from a public safety perspective, is around the fire protection expansion, those two-hundred-and-ten parcels aren't covered with fire hydrants, so we share a couple of assets with Public Works to maintain water tenders, so that we can, we can tender water down there, and we have to do that as part of our insurance rating every five to ten years, and that's the only part of the city where we have to operate very differently and don't have a constant water supply, so it's, it's a bit challenging from an operational perspective, as well as their insurance generally is higher from a fire protection standpoint, because they aren't near a fire hydrant, depending on their insurance company, they may or may not change. So, from a fire perspect, fire protection perspective, we would advocate to fulfill the hydrants as far as we can, because that is very helpful from a timely standpoint and a resource standpoint, so I'll turn it back to Public Works Director Peterson to talk about the rest, I don't think you want me talking about safe drinking water.
Because when I saw that, yeah, chief, because when I saw that with regard to, from the public safety and from fire, I'm thinking, oh my God, because some of the houses down in that area are pretty expensive, and they have huge lots, and they have sprawling houses, and so I think this is something that they should be concerned about.
Madam Mayor, there's a fair amount of training that goes into hauling water, and then, how, not to get too technical, but how the water gets into the truck, because it's not pressurized, you have to suck it into the truck, is, is a fair amount of training, and, and being on that limited water supply is challenging, so, so that part of Burnsville, we know we need to operate that way, and the farther we can get the hydrants, the more efficient and effective we can be in our response, so.
Well, I remember then, when they wanted to secede, and I said, well, then you'll have to buy all of your services from us, or someplace else.
All right. Also, public safety, wells can definitely get polluted, so if we have water down there, our water supply would be there, and we, we know we got safe drinking water to provide, and then septic is a public health aspect as well, if those are failing, that can definitely provide a public safety concern. Environmental, they're similar, but septic also is not good for the natural resources if they're failing, and sewage is going into valuable resources such as wetlands down there, and then wells also potentially could dry up, now there's no risk now, the water supply is high, the water, the aquifers are up, but in general, we believe our water supply is more reliable than wells, so that is some of the benefits of...
See, Ryan, do we know how many septics are failing in that area?
I don't know, and...
The county knows that, because when we did the last analysis, it is the county...
I know, I know, when I was selling houses, if there were septics, very few ever passed inspection, all over the state, actually, it's because of the standards and that, so I'm just kinda curious how many of those are failing, or if we have an idea of that.
Hopefully, most of those failed inspections were relatively minor, they just gotta fix this and that, and they aren't. I don't believe, I believe that the majority of the people in Southwest Burnsville are maintaining their septic systems from a point where they're failing and sewage is going over ground, I don't think we have that situation with very, with very small frequency, so...
And we haven't had any permits pulled to upgrade any of the systems, the septic systems?
Oh, no, I'm sure we have, I don't have the data, but people are maintaining their systems down there.
Because that will be one of the arguments about why they don't want to go with municipal systems, is because they just put in a new septic system and a new, you know, drinking well.
And as I get further through this, there is no part of this that we are trying to force people to hook up with, with tonight's presentation, it is all gonna be optional, and just providing a couple of options, so anyone watching in Southwest, who's, the city is not attempting here tonight to try and sewer and water the whole thing and make people hook up.
Yeah, and the, the thing is that they know that we promised them, that if there's going to be any changes to the policy, that we're gonna be talking to them, and they come in.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
I'll talk about that a little bit.
Nothing is gonna happen without their input.
One hundred percent. All right, just so people get a feel for the size of Southwest Burnsville, you can see all the blue lines, that's all our water system, and then the yellow that I got highlighted in there is the southwest part of town, and that is the area of town that is, it is on wells and septic, is unsuared. So, it's a relatively small portion of the city. Oh, and as BJ said, two-hundred-and-ten parcels are unsuared and water at this time, we, we don't know the cost to complete that, that's, like I said, that's not what we're looking at here tonight. As you dial in a little bit more, the furthest northwest area there, that is an extension we have from Forest Park Heights, so sewer and water is up to that area, and then you can see County Road Five is basically the limit as well, from where sewer and water is, so that's just a zoom-in of the last slide.
Where was Forest Park?
If you look right by the little guy and the, the compass there, it's the furthest upper left-hand corner.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Well, that was quite a long process. Yes, Dan?
Ryan, that upper, on the east side of Five, there's a neighborhood there that is also on sewer and water?
Yep, it's, it's there as well, those don't really extend down to public streets.
Nope.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, is there a name for that neighborhood?
I think that might be Tim, Timberland Drive up there, is my, my recollection.
Yeah.
And is the, is that the old golf course?
Yeah, it's next to the old golf course.
Or it's next to the golf course?
The whole neighborhood in there is without all that.
The golf course is west of, east of Five.
To the east.
Yes, it's on the east side, and it's not in the upper right-hand corner, is it down south of that, is that the new, or where the golf course is?
So, it's just south of Circle High Drive, I can show you.
See, 'cause there's a hundred and fifty-fifth?
Totally failing.
There's some pretty large lots.
Weren't you down there door knocking this summer, Dan?
Pardon?
Weren't you down there door knocking this summer?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where on the map it is, because I'm looking at the lot sizes, south of that area, that's no sewer and water, but that neighborhood did not look like a neighborhood that had no sewer and water.
No, those are very nice houses over there.
Yeah, that's...
This is where the old golf course was, and further to the west.
Yeah.
Oh, that way, okay, gotcha.
You can see the bigger lots compared to these, these are all one-acre lots.
Yeah.
And these are the quarter-acre ones, so, and then this is, the golf course went out like that.
I think I remember that neighborhood in the northwest corner, or northeast corner, sorry.
These seventeen lots are with Forest Park Heights, and they brought sewer and water into here.
Yeah, that I definitely remember.
Okay.
I didn't realize that we had anything outside of southwest on the west side of Five that had no sewer and water.
Yep, just Circle High Drive here is the area that's left there.
That's, it's very rural there, very hilly, too.
So, where's Wildwood Court? Because that's where all of the big houses are.
Well, I think that does have sewer and water.
Yeah, they do have sewer and water, that whole area is much, yeah.
I think, I think they're in here.
Yeah.
Right up in this area. Okay.
Okay.
So, there's the two types that we talked about, developer request, extension, and individuals. Developer requests, we're recommending no discussion on that occur, if a developer wants to get sewer and water and make a whole bunch of new lots, they're gonna continue to have to pay a hundred percent, that would be our recommendation, that's...
Well, and that's what we do with other developers, when they come in, well, before, when we had land.
Correct.
And then they turn it over to us, but it's, they put it in a hundred percent.
All right, and so now, now we're talking a little bit more about the individual request, so a history on this, in twenty-twenty-one, the city council authorized a petition to take sewer and water from the edge of Forest Park Heights up to Marcia Ann Lane, because the lot that's highlighted in purple there was looking to hook up, so we made an agreement with him that we could go extend it all the way to Marcia Ann Lane, which was a huge benefit to us, because it got to an accessible point, plus it provided a hydrant up there. So, we worked with them, it would've cost them approximately twenty-five grand to put a septic in, they agreed to be assessed for that amount, the city was able to find seventy K on a project savings to fund the remaining costs, and there was a, it was a win-win situation, if you consider municipal utilities getting up there and all the environmental and safety aspects of this. So, that's what happened in twenty-twenty-one, then, just past year, Jen has received a request for the neighbor to the south to extend, so that is the impetus for this, do we want to continue to do these one-off type of situations, or how do we want to handle, handle those? So, we came up with four options to consider, if the council wants to open up the policy for consideration. The first would be, consider current policy, the requester would have to pay a hundred percent, it's just the way it is, that, that's what it says now, obviously, a policy is a policy and can always be adjusted. Two would be to basically replicate the, what we did in twenty-twenty-one, where we work with them, figure out what's a reasonable cost share, we try to find some savings or some available funding to do this, this would be out of the sewer and water fund, not out of the general fund. Three, if we want to have a model similar to road improvements, we might do like a sixty-forty share, and that's just what we do, I'm not necessarily recommending that, but that would be an option to consider, because we already do that down there. And then the fourth, if you're wanting to have us look at this, this would make the most logical sense, I guess, you would go and basically extend it down to the next logical point. This would make it more planned out, it would make it less piecemeal, if the next slide would help us look at this, I think, I'll just go to it. So, basically, the lot that hooked up is the one north of the, the red one, the one that's highlighted is the one who's now saying they would like sewer and water, so if, if we wanted to work with them and indicate we are willing to cost share on it, because we think we're getting some benefit as well, why wouldn't we, instead of just going down to that house, why, we're already got a contractor out there, why wouldn't we go all the way down to the next major road and get a hydrant right at an intersection where we could have much better access to it? Of course, the reason why is, it would cost us, right? It would cost us money, we would end up having to, most likely, capital plan it, we may not be able to find cost savings to, to fund it, so it might be more like a two-year process to do something like that. We would say that no one would have to hook up, but if someone did in the future, that they would have to, basically, end up with a deferred assessment, but I know BJ would like, if you want to hear more about the public benefits of having a hydrant down there, he can talk, talk to the, about that, but... No, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
You had your chance.
I'm sorry, I set you up unfairly on that one.
No, you're good, so in that case, obviously, we'd bring a hydrant down to Loop Road, and we wouldn't be at a dead end, which would be a huge benefit from filling, filling water tenders, as well as covering additional lots down there, as Ryan said, the, you know, bringing it to the next logical place helps from a fire protection standpoint.
Okay, and then if any of the other lots further south or to the west, you know, wanted to, another segment could be done.
Yep.
If they wanted to subdivide.
Support future requests.
And I think Ryan mentioned it briefly, but I think it's worth pointing out, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, that, that lot just to the upper-left where hydrant is there, if they decided they wanted to hook up, they would pay a deferred assessment, so they, you know, obviously, in that fourth option, the city would pay for it upfront, but would, excuse me, whatever that assessment amount is, would be deferred, and if they ever decide to hook up, they would have to pay that as part of that fee, so.
So, why would you redo your septic system if it failed, if sewer's sitting right there for the same cost?
Right. See, Ryan, how much would it, how many lines would we have to do to just water that whole area and then have people hook up as they need to hook up? Have you looked at that at all?
We have in the past.
This whole area?
Yeah.
This whole area, yes, there is an older plan, it's out of date, it would be millions.
Yep.
So, no, we, we have not evaluated what that would...
I'm just thinking, as more houses hook up, the, the less value those other houses have, is they're not hooked into sewer and water, if they're, you're the only one with septic in a well in everyone else's city, it's...
Yeah.
Gravitation goes to the city hookups.
The plan that we had in place, Dan, was, is old, so it's old...
Oh, I know, I've been dealing with this since I got out of the council.
And the other thing is that it's yesterday's money, today's money's a lot different.
I get that, I just wondered if you had that ballpark idea, where you'd be on that.
I, I didn't spend any time on, but I just, it would be millions of dollars.
Okay.
No doubt about it, I mean, end up having to redo all the roads, over the top of them, yeah, so, um, so, what we'll be doing, at the end, we'll be looking for direction on both this and the, the streets, and I'll ask that question at that point, and whether you want us to look into one or both, or neither. So, the roadway paving aspect, we have a little less than a mile left of gravel roads in town, and they are all in Southwest Burnsville, it's highlighted there. Currently, the Burnsville, Southwest Burnsville policy indicates a sixty-forty cost share, so when we go in and repave a road that's already paved, the city pays sixty percent, and the homeowners adjacent pay forty percent, and that's by lot, so that's not by front footage. If you want upgrades, such as gravel to pavement or adding curbs, the cost is now a hundred percent borne by the, the residents adjacent. So, this is purely an option for the council to consider, we do have a roadway project considered, scheduled for twenty-four in Southwest Burnsville. If we wanted to potentially add paving of the gravel roads for the same time, it'd be about three-hundred-seventy thousand dollars. We have one road grader in our fleet that is a nineteen-ninety-three vintage, it still works.
I saw that.
We're living along, but it'd be nice if we don't have to replace that whenever the day comes, it just doesn't work anymore, cost of one of those is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we do not have that budgeted. Annual gravel road costs, about ten thousand dollars for dust control, new gravel, those kinds of things. If we do go down this road, we'll have to look at the right-of-ways as the, many of the roads don't exist in the right-of-way, so upgrading, we'd have to evaluate any concerns with that with the city attorney. So, if, if we wanted to consider paving these, the cost would be, like I said, these are all rough estimates, three-hundred-seventy thousand, if the current policy'd be a hundred percent, and be fifteen thousand dollars a lot, if we were to revise the policy to make it a bit more palatable and affordable, the city would pay two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand of that, and we'd have to, we'd be doing assessments at one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and would lower that down to approximately six thousand dollars, more affordable for many of the residents there, and of course, those would be paid off over several years. Basically, and the huge benefit to this is, we don't have to maintain... Basically, and the huge benefit to this is we don't have to maintain these, we don't have to continue in our mind, how do we maintain eight tenths mile of a road of gravel roads? We have all asphalt streets. We're really good at it to keep up these few streets and all the dust control and all these different types of things that we're doing. Along with if, when that gravel or when the, when the grader is no longer, uh, able to be fixed any longer, we don't have to worry about trying to replace it. So, uh, there's lots of benefits for us to not have these few sections. And many of the residents, I do believe, actually want those to be paved with the dust and you just get a much better surface. So that'd be for the residents to tell us, of course. It's just what I've heard. Some people have requested it in the past. So I just wanted to provide some of those benefits.
Before you go on, Dan Keely has a.
Um, I'm trying to wrap my arms around where the hundred percent assessment came from. Is that the way it's always been in the city for all gravel roads going to pavement going back forty, fifty, sixty years? Or is that something that came out of the southwest Burnsville agreement?
In general, new development and new improvements pays for itself.
Yeah.
So if we were elsewhere in town and someone wanted to extend sewer and water or a street up to it, they would have to pay for that road similarly. However, um, the southwest Burnsville policy up to about three years ago indicated that all road improvements, even repaving, well, already paved roads, would be a hundred percent that they would have to petition us to do it. We had many residents at that point who said, we, we're paying property taxes. We want the benefits of the infrastructure trust policy.
Agreed.
And we should pay forty percent as well, not a hundred percent. I think there's a, there's been some turnover in the thinking in there, but once again, we would, uh, go out and find out what they're really thinking.
Logic would, I, I guess, from, and that's sort of the basis of my question is why, uh, are they stuck with a hundred percent? Seems like common sense would say what that you just cited as one of the examples, we're paying property taxes, we're paying into the infrastructure trust fund. Now we're double paying because we have to pay a hundred percent. And I just wanted to understand the origins of that, but.
I think if they want to subdivide and so, because they have large lots and if they put in four new homes in a lot, then they're responsible for the.
But that's different than an existing road, being resurfaced with a different material. That's different. That, that's cutting in new roads. This is not cutting in new roads. This is putting in a new surface on an existing road.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's where I, it's not really a repaving, but, um, it's similar to that. I mean, even though we do, as you noted, there's some right of way issues with where the roads exist or not, is not necessarily where they were supposed to be, uh, as we saw in the past. But anyway, I, I think it's more fair, to be honest with you, for them to be part of the sixty forty split.
The sixty forty.
Yeah, I don't understand why they, they would have to be paid a hundred percent or pay it a hundred percent.
But I think what staff is asking us is that, uh, we do, you know, from a policy perspective, you know, what you're presenting is, makes sense. But we said to the, the people in southwest Burnsville, we won't change any policies until we have that conversation with you. And so council, you know, what staff is asking, uh, do we direct them to move forward and, and have them start having those conversations? They've just outlined for us what that would mean. It's what they're going to be talking to the residents about. And, um, also know that the residents might want to come in and talk with us after they talk with staff because they did that last time too. So, but, uh, you know, that's what it's all about. Is being open, transparent, and listening, uh, to them. And so, but Ryan is right. Things have changed down in that area and pe- people, even that, uh, short stretch of gravel, I think they would like to see it paved.
So we're just talking about sixty forty on the road itself and not any water that goes in there, correct?
Yep.
No.
Just talking pavement.
Just pavement. Just pavement. Yeah. Yeah. Dan?
Well, then, um, I'm glad that we would get them involved. We would anyway. This is, this is a better deal for them, so I can't imagine why they wouldn't. But going back to you have, you put up four options on a slide that you needed to answer or some direction related to the.
Yeah. We promise them that we will always.
Back to water.
Yeah, we promise them that we will always talk to them before any policies are changed. They're a partner.
Well, I think it makes sense to, when you're putting water in.
Yeah.
Is it water and sewer or just water?
Yeah.
We would put in both.
Water and sewer.
Down there and then.
Your recommendation to extend it to the next major intersection seems logical and.
What would that mean with a musoline?
Are those that want to jump in. If you're not going to jump in, there's no change, except you might have a little of your yard dug up.
Yeah.
And reseeded.
Yeah.
But there's not going to be any fees or costs assessed to those property owners who are not going to participate in joining the city water or sewer. Until they decide one day maybe they want to.
Yeah. And you know, I think, was it, was it a hundred and fifty-fifth street at one point? They said no, and then they all came in and said, oh yeah, put in all sewer and water. Was it a hundred and fifty-fifth on the west side?
Um, I'm not sure, but I know two hundred and fifty-fifth street down the west side does have all sewer and water.
Yeah, because at first they said, no, 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 and then one neighbor was going to put it in and then they had a conversation and then they all came in and said, yeah, they want it all, uh, sewer and water. And that was a hundred and fifty-fifth, uh, west of, uh, of County Road Five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of these options, uh, your recommendation is number four?
Yeah, I reckon, you would either, if you're interested in us reaching out, what we would indicate is the staff's, um, recommendation would be number four. Um, yeah, that's what we do.
Talk to them about all of it and say number four gives them all of these benefits.
With no cost.
Metamare members of the council.
I would recommend that.
Just, just by way of a reminder, uh, both on the utility and on the pavement side of things, uh, any change to this policy would require either reprioritization of budget or additional assessment on how we cover costs.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily mean, uh, levy increase, but that's also not off the table, right? In terms of, uh, the money will have to come from somewhere. So.
Of course.
As you're, as you're having conversation about this, just full transparency, as we think towards the twenty twenty-four budget, this is not reflected in our current planning. That doesn't mean that we can't reprioritize and work through it. We have had plenty of internal staff conversations about that. Um, uh, but just by way of a reminder.
By the way, by the time we get through the whole process, this, I mean, I, I assumed this is a twenty twenty-four thing.
Yeah, well, we have time to plan in that direction.
Yeah. No, I'm glad that you remind us.
That we're talking about?
Say again?
Is that road paved right now that we're talking about?
Marcia Ann Lane? Yes, that is.
Yeah.
We're really just talking about, in my mind, it's simplified. I think we're in a line down to the corner down there that the fire department can hook up to. You know, if the people want to hook up to it, they can pay to hook up to it, have a good day. Does it make sense for us to put water in heavily wooded areas where we may have to fight a forest fire one day?
Yeah, and I'm glad that you keep raising that and you need to do that city manager that, uh, you know, whenever we make these changes in a policy, it has a, a, a funding implication.
Well, I don't want to be a wet blanket. I do think that the staff recommendation is, is an appropriate one, but yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not a.
It's an important part of the conversation as we think about, to Councilmember Keely's point, getting to the end result of, of some sort of a policy change.
Yeah, Tara.
So are you also looking for us on what our preference is on what the assessment would be on water?
Yeah, I will take that.
Uh, so I think we have kind of set a precedent with the first person.
Yes.
So I'm fine with that.
Yeah, because they already paid the.
I think we've set a precedent with that first person, so they paid twenty-five thousand dollars to hook up.
Yeah.
Just to sewer. They didn't hook up to water.
Yeah, that's sewer.
Is there?
That was like twenty-five percent roughly.
Is there, well, I should ask, what are the monetary differences between that if we're running?
Ninety-five thousand dollars, wasn't it total?
If we're running water and sewer versus just sewer, what is the difference on that?
Uh.
Underground infrastructure.
They're, they're very close in cost per foot, but to do it, to not do both at the same time would be very cost inefficient. Cause you'd have to.
Right.
Yeah, because you have to dig it up.
You'd have to redo, do it again. So my recommendation would definitely be to extend both.
Yeah, and I, no worries on that, but we're looking at what do you assess the resident? So if the one resident was assessed twenty-five thousand dollars, but that was only for sewer hookup, that was not for water hookup, is there, is there a monetary difference to us in running both versus just running one?
Assume there must have a deferred assessment for the water.
The plan was to defer assessment where when they hook up to water, then they'll be paying another twenty-five thousand, I think is what we had talked to them about. But we don't have it on the books because they had no interest at the time.
Yeah.
So that's part of the policy that we need to figure out would be, um, that another difference between the first one and, and future ones is there was no street. So this was going up between two properties and there was no street to put back. So it was considerably less expensive than when we do the next run, which is under a street.
Okay, then I would ask that staff help us with what, what would that be? Like what would that ass- deferred assessment amount be?
Well, it's a different funding.
Twenty-five thousand dollars as a model, understanding that it did some things and didn't do other things.
Yeah, and remember that water is a different funding source.
Right now, they're both, sewer and water are both in the, it's, there's one utility fee.
Right.
Yeah.
That's not in the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't pay sewer and water down there.
Yeah, they, but they don't. But the thing is, when you, when they start paying for water, water is water and sewer is sewer.
So my hearing that you're interested in us investigating both, uh, with the neighborhood as well as then trying to figure out some of the impacts of these questions about what could be hooked up, when, and the type, different type of assessments. That would be part of the policy if we want to move forward.
You guys are the experts. You know what you need to do.
Okay.
Just let us know. You, you want direction and I believe that all of us is go ahead and have the discussion with the neighborhood, right, Vince?
Yes, um, but all of this is contingent on a majority of the neighborhood wanting to be a part of this, right? If twenty percent of the neighborhood says we're in and eighty percent says we're not interested, then I think it's fairly simple to just say then we're not gonna. Wh- why put forth the effort of doing something that isn't going to materialize, you know, anybody hooking up to it, right?
Yeah.
If I could, we would never do any of this without someone asking us to do it. So if you change the policy, it allows us to then have that opportunity to extend. We would never go through without a resident saying, can you extend to us? And then option four would be, yeah, we'll extend to you, but then let's go all the way to the intersection and have that deferred assessment option. But we would never, if, um, if twenty percent only say we're interested in you proceeding with this policy, they might never be impacted at all because they would never come and ask. Does that make sense? I mean, we, we would only, this would be petition based.
Responding to actual requests.
Responding to requests and not, and not going forward and, and just putting in, um,
Yeah.
without that request.
Yeah, the majority we're talking about isn't all or nothing, right? We're all going to get it or we're all not. We, this is sort of that interim path of, well, okay, one person wants it, we can deliver it, but we're going to lay it for the whole street. Everybody else can stay out of it until they're ready to get in, but we're going to service that one person. I think the biggest thing it comes down to is cost.
Yeah.
Well, and that's.
Like if you have one person on every street say, I want it.
That's where my hesitation comes in because if we're going to spend money to extend a line and only one person bites over the course of ten years, then we've got, you know, a line with one attachment and a, and BJ gets a fire hydrant.
Hey, that's a big safety plus.
Put a little bow on it.
I'm glad they're not fire.
Public safety is like a little treat they dangle in front of us.
And next he's going on an electric fire truck and I saw on the news there one point eight million.
I'm just saying, you know, do we justify the expense to extend a line if it never gets used is, is where my concern is, but.
Yeah.
We, uh, Ryan, we did extend the line and then it, it fills up. Okay. God, I forget the name of the street. It's just south of Wildwood Court. So when you come down and it's south, and that was a huge development and I forget the name of the property owner. And we allowed them to have two acre lots because then they could, could have services. And for those who didn't want service, they still had enough room for a, a septic system, right? Because they had to have two acres to have a septic, have a septic system.
If you are, have access to sewer and water, then you do not need to have the two acres.
Yeah, but some of them didn't and so that's where, you know, they had to have two ac- two acres to do that. Yeah.
Uh, I just want to circle back on sort of summarizing this. The, the policy has always been all or nothing. And that means everybody on the street, if they didn't represent a major, majority, were, were held back by the majority who didn't want it. So nobody got it. The beauty of this is we're able to actually get it in there by one person wanting it, if it makes sense. And we can afford to carry the paper on all the rest of the lots that we, that we ran pipe for but aren't tapped into it yet, right? Now, in a sense, we're, it's getting laid, right? The, the, the pipe is getting laid, the sewer and the water to, even though it's a bit fragmented. But ultimately, eventually, over many years, the whole southwest will get done sprinkled based on demand by lot owners. And then everybody else will start going, well, I'll just, you know, as their sewer or septic fails, right, they can go, okay, and I can jump into the city.
Yeah.
Maybe the Met Council wants to help invest it for future customers.
That's the big problem, challenge for us is funding all the one-offs on every street as they pop up. That this first one was easy to do. When we open it up with an open policy, it's going to cause a lot of reaction by the residents and we might find there's a lot more interested today.
I think to, to Councilmember Workman's question and to Councilmember Keely's point, uh, a consideration of this policy by going out and talking with, with the neighborhoods about whether or not they would be interested in this type of arrangement, uh, that allows us to come back to you to have a little bit more to, to Kara's point. A little bit more of an informed conversation. Really, the intention here is a community-initiated strategic approach uh, to, to thinking about not only extending water and sewer utilities, but also, uh, to, to prevent the, the one-off, the one-off situations where down the road, uh, we end up with a patchwork of pavement management problems. Uh, as we're, as we're trying to make those one-off extensions and it allows Jen and her team and the city to be a little bit more forward-thinking about if we're going to do this to a logical termination point, not only for the, for the public safety benefit of it, the individual property benefit, but also being more strategic in just the, the quality of the roadways in this area. So we're not tearing up roads, patching them, tearing up roads, patching them. It is in, in the long term, more efficient and effective in terms of our use of resources and, and strategically thinking about water sewer utility as well as pavement.
Yeah.
Well, I get it. And it gives Jen and Ryan the ability to say yes instead of saying, you know, no, we can't do that because we don't have a line there, so.
Or the majority hasn't joined you, so we're not going to do anything for you or can't do anything.
Which is what it used to be.
Right.
It really provides to that point, it really provides another tool in the toolbox for staff to be more responsive to the community and for Jen to be able to do a better job uh, in, in responding to those requests.
Since all the sewer is processed by Met Council, could we ask our Met Council rep if he would handle the fifty percent that's the sewer part? Sorry to put you on the spot. Join in the jump on the Met Council for funding.
I would, I would just say, I, I don't foresee this happening like a half mile away. This one is immediately south of the one that already has it. So I don't foresee this, someone going twenty lots away, can I get sewer and water and we're going to bite and put it away. I don't foresee that occurring. This is, it's still going to be step by step if someone wants it.
As logically can be.
Yep.
Executed on and funded by the city.
Right.
And, and the council will always have the final outcome decision here, right? You change this policy, we have a project, we're still coming back to you for direction on that project. At that point in time, you have the ability to, to vote that project up or down based on the information you have.
And it would be a four-fifths vote with the special assessment. So it would be a super majority to get it done, just as a part of the special assessment policy.
Let's go with the staff recommended number four and have the conversation with the neighborhood and see what the feedback is.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, that's better direction.
Okay, everybody?
We have the direction we need.
Needed the direction?
And then we're also doing the street improvements. You asked to investigate that as well.
I mean, you only have an eighth of a mile.
Those would primarily be with the people affected by the.
Sixty forty.
Yep, the sixty forty.
On the pavement.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then we'd be talking with the people of gravel roads on that.
And as we gather community input, we will also be working internally to identify, answer questions that, that you all have asked and also um, model out what this might look like financially for us.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps we can give them the choice. Well, and perhaps we can give them the choice of the 60 forty on the street improvement or paying for the new gravel scraper thinger.
Yeah, a point eight mile.
Dealer's choice. Which do you prefer?
Spin the wheel of destiny.
Okay, Ryan? You're good?
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is yours also.
That's mine.
Oh, is that, oh, Jen's. Yeah, it's Jen's. You're giving up, giving us an update.
It should be up there.
Or spring maybe, because it is long season.
Thank you. All right, so this is just an overview of our pavement management, or sometimes called our street improvement process. And, and really just to give the council a history, but also to inform the public, anyone who's watching, I, I think someone had an idea of putting this on the website, just this presentation. So it's an overview for information if you have questions about our process. So the first thing when we are doing our pavement management program is a street selection. And just by way of history, we have a contractor who evaluates the pavement condition every three years. And this year is our next year. And that vehicle in the lower right is a similar vehicle that will drive every street that we have. And there's, you probably can't see, but there's cameras and it's evaluating what our pavement condition index is. So for a brand new street, that'll be 100. And for our near gravel or probably our gravel streets, that's a zero. So that's the, the street that's, you know, down to nothing. We have a 15-year plan and it's prioritizing streets based on that PCI. But then annually, the staff group, which includes engineering, our asset management, maintenance, we drive around to the next five years and we put them into appropriate groupings of projects. So we look at the maintenance history, we look at water main breaks, we look at how many times our maintenance staff is out there doing patching. We look at project proximity because if you just went straight on the PCI, you'd be peppered. So we need to put a cohesive project together. And then we look at our available budget. So we have a budget that we've allocated funds for and we base, we do an updated cost estimate and then we make sure that we are within that budget. So every project or every street improvement is a two-year cycle. So I'm gonna go through that cycle right now. Coming up pretty soon in February, we'll order the feasibility report. And that is a statutory requirement. And a lot of these are noted as statutory requirements for special assessments. And that authorizes us as staff to begin collecting data for an analysis. So we send our survey, we are able to send our survey crew out there. We get a contractor to do soil borings. We start looking at stormwater modeling for our selected streets. We do our utility inspections. And then we, although not part of the contract, we think of these projects as looking at everything on the street to see what needs to occur. And we look to see if there's street lighting repairs. We have a different, a different fund for that, the street lighting fund. And Dakota Electric or Excel will do that, that work for us, but we tell them where to go. And then we also set up a project and planning website. So two years in advance, we've honed in on the streets that we're selecting and then we, we start with that outreach by having that project website up. And then March through August of that first year, we're starting our project scoping. So we mail out a postcard, the one on the screen is a sample from last year. And we're letting the people who are adjacent to the street project know that we're looking at their street for a street improvement. So this postcard for 2023 projects was mailed out in 2022. And we let them know that we're looking at utilities. So they might see people popping manhole covers on their street. We're looking at stormwater, we're doing survey on their street. We are evaluating our multimodal plan to see if there's any projects that are adjacent or nearby that we might want to include. We're looking at complete, complete streets, our complete streets policy, any ADA updates that are needed. And if there's traffic signals in the vicinity, then we're starting to look at that with a consultant as well. And we're reviewing the budget. So the project scoping is occurring a full year before we're actually doing construction. And then we convene community. So we send out this, this is a sample letter and it's invitation to an open house. It's got their estimated assessment so that they're know, they're knowing that there's a dollar amount associated and that they can start to plan and budget for that. It tells them the tentative public hearing date, which is months in the future, but just so that they have an awareness that there will be a public hearing. And then there's contact information. We have our website on there and it's got a notify us button and the e-subscribe button. So they can sign up to e-subscribe and they can click the notify us to let us know of any issues on their street that we should be aware of. And we include this project map so they know what areas we're looking at. And then I have with me tonight, Ryan, will you pass these stuff? This is our informational brochure that's mailed in every packet of information. And then we have the meetings. And so as of 2021, we started going out into the community to meet with them in, in their neighborhood park. We also always have one at City Hall just as an option. In 2021 and 2022, we were under the you belong here tent and just last, or it was last year, but for this year's project, we used the new engagement vehicle. We have at the meeting, we have table, we have maps, we have more brochures. We have an estimated assessment so they can talk to somebody about that and we have comment cards. There's the rolled out maps, you probably can't see in this picture, but we have post-it notes. They can start to post it, you know, problems they see in their area. There's a drainage issue here. Will you take down my tree? Like those kinds of questions can be written right on the map. And from that, we refine our project scope. So we look at all the comment cards that we got with neighborhood issues and we also look at the notify us that we got through the website. And we're looking for drainage problems, curb and gutter issues, trees, any ADA issues that people have. We're looking at pedestrian crossings and multimodal issues. And then in years past, not every year, we have traffic calming already on the street. And so in our 2021, no, two project, we had a project that, or a street that had speed humps already. So we surveyed the neighborhood and asked, do you want to keep those speed humps? Overwhelmingly, yes. We had a reduced access so that people, it was a one-way into the neighborhood. We asked, do you want to keep this? Overwhelmingly, yes. So we're reaching out to see what specific traffic calming issues that they might already have, whatever they might want to keep. And then also in that November timeframe, we were meeting with our traffic committee. We're going through the project, we're going through the multimodal plan and we're getting feedback from traffic committee consists of engineering, planning, maintenance, fire, police, communications. So we're getting that staff input. And now, this is year one, December, end of year. We brought to you in December, the feasibility study, also called the preliminary report. And that is a statutory requirement for special assessments also. And it's a detailed description and justification for all of the improvements. It has an updated, more detailed cost estimate, lists the funding sources, and it provides the special assessment details for how we calculated the special assessment and who's in that assessment role. And then per the state statute, we, the city engineer has to recommend if it's a feasible and cost-effective project. So that's what the purpose of this preliminary report is. And now going into projects year, the cycle, project cycle year two, we hold the improvement public hearing. So that's coming up in early February for our 2023 projects. That's something that's only for projects with special assessments that we have to have a public hearing. We mail notices, an invitation, a similar letter, has the estimated assessment, has an official legal notice, same map, same brochure, same contact information and same website. So we're repeating the information, making sure that anyone who might have missed it with the first one is getting it this time. And then there's a legal notice that's put in, into the newspaper. At the public hearing, the staff will do a presentation and have a recommendation. And then you'll hold the public hearing and see who has anything to say about it. And then this is one where the council, in order to approve the project, it requires four fifths approval. In February, March, March, April, we're finalizing the plans. We need for all of our stated routes, we need approval from MINDOT. We're starting to get our permits, doing the final stormwater calculations, finalizing the specs, and we have to do a low bid process. So we advertise the bid and then we have to go with the lowest responsive bidder. And then we award the contract and at that same meeting, we have the assessment public hearing. Same notices that are sent out, but this time with the final assessment amount. So we have calculated that this is the right amount and it has all those same legal information and then legal notice in the paper. And same thing, where the staff will do a presentation, have a recommendation and then the public hearing. This one doesn't require four fifths, this is a simple majority requirement. In May of the project construction year, that's when we are gonna do something, we're bringing something back this year. So pre-COVID, we would have a pre-construction meeting. We'd have it here in this room. And then COVID happened and we were trying to not meet with people. So we didn't have that extra meeting. This year, we're gonna bring it back, we're gonna have the engagement vehicle in two locations and invite the public to come and ask their questions, talk to us about what's construction, when, when will, we'll have a tentative construction schedule, we won't have the final. But staff will be able to have maps and all the brochures and answer construction questions. The assessment hearing will have already happened, but we'll answer any assessment questions as well. And then construction happens. So one thing is that the contractor sets the schedule with staff approval, but they are going to, the way they bid the project, lowest bid was based on a certain schedule and of events. So we have to meet our specs for making sure that they aren't keeping things open for too long. We're coordinating with private utilities. But we have our construction technicians who are out in the field doing the inspections and talking with any residents. And then two weeks before we get to a certain neighborhood, we will mail out a constructions coming letter. So the construction is phased over this whole time period from May to October. So while we might award a contract in April, your particular neighborhood may not be even touched until June, July, maybe even August sometimes. If there's a high impact, like a water shutdown or there, there's gonna be a closure for their driveway, we're doing door knocking so we can get direct contact or hanging a flyer. And then everybody has access to our weekly website e-subscribe updates. So we're really asking residents if you want to be in the know with the weekly updates to e-subscribe because that's the best way to get information. And then October, November, it's end of construction activities, the major ones. So there's always gonna be some cleanup in the spring. But we mail out a postcard once the major activity is done, so pretty much the road is paved, and request that they participate in the survey. Remind them that their assessment prepayment is due November 15th if they choose to prepay. And then the final restoration and punch list is in the spring. So it's a two-year cycle from beginning to end and I stand for any questions.
Any questions? I think when you instituted this new process where we start early, it helps everybody understand what's gonna happen. But it's good to see it all recapped in terms of here's what the two-year process looks like. But you know, we have a five, a five-year plan, but it's really 15 years. I remember always talking to you about all of that. And when people ask, when is my street gonna be done? And I says, well, let's see, you need to talk to Ryan because it, it might be in five years and it might not be in five years, so.
Very true. Now you can talk to Jen.
We do have a 15-year plan, but then, like I said, we're reevaluating and making changes and tweaks to make sure that we're getting the best project compiled that we can. So when somebody calls Ryan or me, we usually tell them it's tentatively scheduled, but all subject to change because in a year, a road can deteriorate pretty fast. And we, that's why we do that spring drive around to see what's happened over the winter.
I remember when we did that with Aubrey, that gives us an insight into understanding part of the process that you go through. And then I think, Ryan, was it you and Steve that took us out? I, I rode with Steve to do street, to do that analysis. Because you can feel the bumping in the road and.
Yeah, I think we took you out in a street superintendent truck so you were bouncing around as much as possible.
On the passenger side, of course.
Yeah.
We certainly know that these types of projects are disruptive to people's daily lives when they're going on. And the end result is incredibly productive for their daily lives. But I, I'm incredibly proud of the work that Jen and her team does. We talk about wanting to be on the leading edge. I think that this process and how this is managed is exactly that. I would put it up against any community that we typically compare ourselves to. And it's, I don't need to remind all of you, it's, it's always, it's always a good thing when you hold a special assessment hearing and the comments that you get are purely compliments of the work that staff are doing. That's, that's unusual and I think it's reflective of the leadership that goes into this. So I certainly appreciate Jen's time in putting this together and helping the community to understand what we're doing over those two-year periods of time.
And it's very good to do it again because I remember when you initiated this process, Jen, where we go early so that everybody understands and that they get their assessments in May rather than in September.
And really some of that was Jen leading the way that inspired things like the community engagement vehicle, right? She was doing it, she was out in the community with that type of input and kind of near-home connection before we, we made those changes, so.
Yeah, and when, and when we had the assessment hearing, they came to praise Jen and the, the team that went out into the neighborhoods and they had a better understanding because they can look at their street and then you can show them instead of looking at maps, you know, why we're doing what they're, what we're doing and so forth. So that's well done. Thank you.
The engagement vehicle has been, was amazing this year because in years past, we had a table, rolled out maps, some rocks to hold everything down. And now having a screen and a computer to hook up has been really great. So we can zoom in to right where the problem areas are that people want to talk about. So that's been a really good benefit for us, I'm sure others as well.
Well, it's a good thing, but it's benefit for the community because now they're informed in a way that they can see it and understand it.
Makes it far more efficient for us to go and do that. And things like door knocking and that type of thing, Jen has a great team who are out there connecting with, with neighbors every day on, on this stuff as projects are, are being planned and prepared and managed.
Yeah, Hugo.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I would just like to gush on staff. In particular, the last two presentations, I think really epitomizes what we're trying to do and what we should be doing as, as city servants, not only being innovative, thinking outside of the box with the Southwest, Burnsville, convenient community. And, and how can, that started with staff wanting to provide better customer service. So really, really good job with that. And of course, the street resurfacing, I think, was a very good presentation because it outlines all the steps and the importance of engaging with community members and whatnot. So well, well, well done.
Well, that's great, but it also is a great team that works together, like from Hugo to Ryan and Jen and everybody else, you know, it's doing all of that work. I know that some of the things that we've been doing is different than what we used to do, but we are doing things different. And, and every time we make changes and we look at things, then it has, it has a benefit. And it's not like what it is, it used to be, but it's different and different is not bad. Yeah, okay. Any, any thoughts, comments for Jen and Ryan? Good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, there you go. And thank you. I, I love seeing this presentation again, Jen, because I remember when you presented it before. And every time we see it or else just going through the process, you know, it's, it's great. I like the fact that people like it, that they know in May what they're gonna be charged rather than in September. Yeah, so good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, roundtable. Vince, I think this is yours, No Mo May? Because we all got the, the notice from the organization that is promoting this.
We got it last year too, I think.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to bring it forward to, I guess, engage with staff a little bit to see if this is a viable idea, if it makes sense for Burnsville and then talk to council, kind of with the same questions. I mean, I'm not gonna repeat the email verbatim, but for the listening public, essentially, council got an email asking us to participate in a program, unofficial program, I guess, called No Mo May where citizens would not mow their grass for the entire month of May with the intent of promoting pollinating plants. According to the, the group Zero Waste Advocates of Minnesota, it- According to the group Zero Waste Advocates of Minnesota, it would potentially provide food for pollinators, reduce gasoline mower emissions, reduce noise pollution and so on. After discussing this a bit with Hugo and our staff. And I'm going to ask Hugo to maybe take the wand on this and, and talk a little bit about what the internal discussion was in response to this proposal. Might not to, not to just diminish the, the program or what they're, what they're seeking. But it sounds like we might have some different ideas about what we could do in lieu of No Mo May, I guess. And I would maybe ask Hugo or whoever the lead was to talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Mayor, council member, working, thank you. I'm going to pass the baton slash wand to Ryan because he and his staff are the experts on that.
And probably Jeff also will chime in because it has a lot to do with property maintenance.
Yep. So basically, we love the fact that folks are trying, caring about the bees, caring about the pollinators. We, as a staff, just don't feel that that No Mo May is the best solution. The reasons for that are the primary flower that comes about of this is the dandelion. The dandelion is not native to America and bees, it's not the type of flower that they are looking for. It doesn't help them out nearly as much as a native plant. Also, if, if you'll take it literally and then don't mow once all the way through June. When you mow, you're cutting off a huge portion of the grass blade and it's much harder on your lawn. So it is not good for your lawn to let it grow however tall that would be and then, and then decide to mow it after that. So what, what we would recommend is, what's really going to be helpful for the pollinators is more sections of native plants or a pollinator lawn. The No Mo May thing won't help them nearly as much as something like that would do. Now, the carbon emissions or the, you know, mowing, the noise and the reduction in emissions, you know, that is true. Those would help the environment for those purposes. But this, it's not, it's not very effective for helping the pollinators is, is our point. So I mean, we do a lot of, I could go through a couple bullet points. If one of the things that we're actually doing to, to help out with different educational opportunities. For instance, the Grow Burnsville thing also, turn the hockey rink into a, an area with a bunch of veggies. Obviously that's a whole bunch of pollinator opportunities. And then we've done lots of turf conversions from, on mown turf over to native plants. Those are the kinds of things we love to see the residents take on much more so than the code enforcement or much more so than not mowing for a month. Is that enough of an explanation?
Secret that our natural resources department and our sustainability plan is working full-time throughout the spring and summer.
And there's some other things that we have done already, Vince. And that is people can now plant in their yards, the front yard and not just the backyard. Native plants and pollinators and so forth. And when I go on my walk, I see a lot more residents transforming their front lawns into native gardens and, and pollinating. Then we also have a partnership with Excel. So under the lines, the electrical lines, they plant. Kara and I, on a rainy day one year, was out there planting.
We did.
With the, so, and these were native species and also were plants that will also help butterflies, but also bees and so forth. So there's a, so that's a huge line. So it's not that we haven't done anything. My concern with No More May because when this came up, we, last year, we had a lot of issues with property maintenance and people not mowing. And still again, this year, we had some of that, that I think you and Dan went out and talked to some neighbors. I know BJ and I went out because they asked for that. And Jeff, from your folks and you're still working, well, probably preparing for next, for next summer.
I can. So I talked to Minnesota Extension Office and they said that in Minnesota, especially for the first couple of weeks of May, dandelions and clover are extremely important for our pollinators. Because our native plant species and our other planted species are not yet, not yet in flower. And so they said, do you need to do No Mo May for the entire month? No, no, you don't. But for the first couple of weeks, to not mow and to not spray your weeds actually is like a very, very positive thing that residents could do. So that, that was just from their perspective and it was just a timing thing because of, because of our lovely climate that we're all enjoying the hell out of right now. But, but you know, that, that was their view on it. So.
Yeah.
Last year I actually participated, even though the city didn't officially participate. And I got a lot of weeds in my front yard. There was no doubt about that. And about the third, toward the end of the third week, I had to mow it down. It was finally like, no, all right, this is not. But I, I hear what you're saying about the early flowers probably really helped the pollinators. And we had, we have a lot of pollinator plants in our yard anyways. And so I noticed we had a lot more bees this year than we normally do. So I don't know if that helped or not, but I, I, I guess in my mind, if the city isn't doing it officially, at least if people want to do it, I don't think I'd have a problem if someone wants to do it in their yard.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think I want them to see it do it all summer long, but.
No more summer.
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Council members, you did bring up a good point that I failed to talk about, which was the, if we, less herbicide use.
Yeah.
Clearly is a definite benefit as well. So you know, maybe it's educating on, don't fertilize, fertilize slash apply herbicides. And it's okay if you don't mow to the middle of May, probably not up to eight inches anyway.
Yeah, no kidding.
Without going full-fledged in and we're getting some of the benefits, some of the education. And then we can keep it, the grass under the eight inches in general. And then at the same time, talk about, you know, if you want to knock out a portion of your yard and make them onto natives, this is a really good idea.
Which would be fantastic. And I think I've asked before and I probably got the answer and I simply don't remember. But I know at one point we were looking at having like a couple, just like sample drawings of, if you wanted to naturalize in your front yard, like here's, you know, here's a couple of plants that look good together in a spot. And it was something like, you know, because a lot of people do the plantings up by their, you know, up by their house to, to do like a grouping there or that kind of thing. And it wasn't to like say you should do this, but in case people had questions and it would be like, oh, well, here's an example of that. And then having that at the native plant sale.
Yes. It's a good point. We have an annual native plant sale. Like we're selling, we're not, we're not its vendors, but 2,500 people have attended over three years. We also have a lawns reimagine workshop. That's probably where we have that.
Yeah.
We had 150 people there last year. So people are paying attention. So we do have a lot of education.
Yeah.
I can tell you on my walks, Portland Avenue has a, a home that the whole front yard is planted in native species. And bee-friendly flowers and butterflies also.
So Hugo and I thought if we didn't do No Mo May, we could do something like Go So May.
Go So May? Oh. I like it. Madam Mayor, I have to pick up my wife. She just kind of, she needs to be picked up. I apologize. So I have to, I do have to run.
Okay. Well, you know, this is, I don't know.
You hear my feelings on it. If we want to do it, do it. If you don't want to do it, but I'll probably do the first couple of weeks.
I think, I think for right now, my, where I sit, we're doing a lot of things that help the bee population, the butterfly population and all of that. But I'm also concerned about, that people will then say, okay, oh, I thought we have No More May, but No Mo May, but it's, they're into June and July. And then that creates a lot of conflict with property maintenance issues. So for me, why don't we continue to support the work that our staff is doing with our residents with regard to native species? I mean, that what we did here in Civic Center between, in the front. It's huge.
It's great.
You know, we took that whole area and turned it into native species and butterfly and bee-friendly.
By my house on North River Hills, there's a big native planting over, on a formerly turf as Ryan talked about. So I mean, yeah, we're, we're certainly doing it across the city. I, you know, I didn't have a skin in the game. I just, we got the email and wanted to explore the idea. And after hearing our staff's response to it and understanding what our sustainability plans are and what we're doing already. I mean, I'm not going to be upset if we opted not to do this or if we informally said to the citizens, if you want to do it, go for it, but that we're not going to like formally endorse or sign on.
But the only thing is that what do we do when we have complaints?
Same thing we always do.
Yeah. I, I would suggest that we focus on the things that we're doing right now and encourage people to, you know, because they can do it in their front yard. They can, so Jeff, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, and we've certainly talked to our code enforcement staff about this. And I think the experience is it varies, of course, by season. But you know, by the time May comes around, it takes a while to get to the eight inches. And so usually by the time we do get complaints and it's going over eight inches, we get to the point where they're not engaging in a conversation with us. It's well into the beginning of part of June before we're taking any actual abatement activities. And so our process just isn't for, for people that may be participating overly aggressive to be mowing people's grasses if they're participating in it long-term. So just the way that the growing season works and our time period works.
No one's grass really grows the first couple of weeks of May. Like you're not getting much of anything.
Yeah. And the other thing, I think I like the idea of having education, doing the sale of native species plants and probably helping our residents with how to plant the kind of plants that are bee-friendly and butterfly-friendly, et cetera.
The audience who's there is pretty informed in general. You know what I mean? Those folks who are showing up to that thing, but we can certainly have some stuff that can help with that. But that group is pretty well-informed on what they're looking for.
Maybe on our social media where we're getting.
Yeah, we advertise it extensively.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, and maybe it's halfway through, let, let your lawn go a little bit to the first, before you mow it, but not go in full-mow May. And if you can hold off on herbicides as well.
It's a big one.
That's going to help, help out. And without going full-fledged, that would, that'd be our recommendation.
Yeah. I think encouraging our people to not use herbicides and, and focusing on the things that's, we're doing now and, and growing that capacity is much better than just doing a program that's only a month. But you know, what is sustainable and long-term? So council, with your permission, we can direct staff to just not look anymore into No More May, but focus on the things that we're already doing and grow that capacity.
I think there's a little more nuance to it than that. I think what we were all getting to was the city isn't going to officially participate. Code enforcement kind of understands the deal and you know, it's not a big deal until usually when it's getting into June and it's out of hand. And you know, we can, we can encourage maybe holding off on those pesticides during that crucial first part of May when, when our pollinators are, are desperate for anything in our tundra to snack on. I think maybe that was a little more what we were looking at. Which is pretty close to what you said, but just a little, little more friendly towards it.
I'm certainly hearing the council say that you're interested in ensuring a future where we're prioritizing sustainable practices and encouraging the type of education engagement with the community that.
Yes.
That, that leads us down that path.
Yeah.
And we certainly can depend on our natural resource management staff and our communications teams who are very well capable in, in making sure that that messaging is getting out there. And I can also make sure that you all have an update on what we're planning on doing ahead of the season.
Yes, thank you.
And that grows the capacity of the work that we are already engaged in. Okay. Ryan?
Perfect.
Okay.
Did I capture it, Vince?
Yeah. Everybody okay?
You did. Yes.
Okay. Staff needs consensus here.
Yes.
Okay. Got it? Okay.
You will see more from us.
Okay.
It's not going to go on the levy, is it?
No. You don't need to add it to that list.
I already added one tonight.
Okay, Vince, why don't you, so we go to advisory report? You have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Kara?
So Dakota 911, we authorized them to make a offer to a new executive director. I'm waiting on hearing acceptance of that. But the person knew they were going to be getting the offer. They were excited about it and they knew the parameters of the job and how much money it paid and all that kind of stuff. So it is expected that that person will accept. There may be a little delay between the old executive director leaving and the new one arriving. But it should be a very short delay if there is one. And we're, we're hoping that there is not, but if there is, it's just by days. So that's the main, main update there for the commissions that I've been at.
Council members, just as a late addition I did hear today that an individual has accepted the position.
There we go.
January 23rd. I'll share that. I'll share the specifics with the council in my weekly update.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Good. That is good news.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Dan?
I-35 Solutions last met in November. And the only new news from that meeting, our next meeting is a day after tomorrow. The I-34, I-35 corridor evaluation study is coming together and we're expecting a presentation in possibly this Thursday's meeting. And let's see, nothing else news. I mean, the Highway 13 Dakota Avenue interchange was under construction back then. They noted at that meeting that we received the federal grant for the 2025 project for the roundabout and the ramp near Burnsville Center off of 35. And Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, we're meeting later this month. The STA, which is a branch off of that, we're a member of, has a new lobbying firm, Pool Haas. And our legislative breakfast is planned for 8:00 AM, January 30th at the State Capitol Building. It'd be great to have an in-person meeting. Tony Albright is a member of Pool Haas and he is handling the Suburban Transit Authority lobbying, which we're very excited about. AIM Center, we haven't met in a little while, but things have been rolling pretty good. Great fourth quarter at the, at the AIM Center. And get your tickets. There's a full complement of great things to come, to go see. Entertainment, music, plays, other. I personally am part of a group of 20 people going to the Rush Tribute Concert this Sunday night. Can't wait. My brother-in-law saw the band in Indiana and said they were incredible. So I'm glad that Brian booked that one for the rock and rollers in the crowd. Metro Cities, of course, hasn't met yet. And the Public Policy Committee, nothing really new going on there. That's pretty much it. NLC, oh, sorry, NLC. NLC, oh, sorry, NLC, we're getting geared up for meetings, first meeting this month. I'm, I'm playing a little bit more important role there, so more deeply engaged in it. And Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, I'm vice chair in 2023, and I'm joining the management committee at the first meeting of the 2023 group in February. So, a little deeper involvement in the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority as well. That's it.
Okay. Municipal Legislative Commission, and I think last month we reported on this, that we went with Pool Haas as well, NLC, and, and so we haven't met since then, because we had just met, and we made that decision. We've already started meeting with the International Festival, Community Foundation, that meets this Thursday, we didn't have a meeting in December, we had a Christmas gathering, and the Burnsville Savage Joint Counsel Committee, that we're, we're meeting on...
January 19th, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, so, that will be then, and there's nothing else to report. Okay, staff, is there anything else? City manager?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Okay, Hugo?
Be careful driving home.
Okay.
Homage to Vince.
Yeah. Yeah. Dan?
Did you want to do a festival update, Mr. Workman?
There you go. Pleasure's all yours.
I'll throw that one to me. We are meeting, we are meeting again to plan our 2023 event, and we had a download meeting in September, right after the last event, and collected several pages of notes of, of success and opportunities to make it better, and the 19th, we're meeting at Fire Station One with our Board of Directors, along with all of our chairs, volunteer event committee chairs, to work through a fairly long list of opportunities and changes, and pretty excited. And then Skip Neenhouse, our operations chair, and I are attending the Minnesota Federation of County Fairs Convention this weekend, actually, this Thursday through Sunday, in a hotel in Bloomington, and we're going to meet with some vendors there and begin to secure some commitments. And then, very excited, we've already booked two bands, returning Friday night, only at the Burnsville Festival and Fire Master earlier. Johnny Home Band's coming back to rock the stage. Even though we had some really bad rain, there were several hundred people, probably two, 300 people, that came out and stayed all night last, in 2022, through the rain, because he puts on such an incredible show. And Saturday night, we have booked Take It To The Limit in the Fabulous Armored Dillos. Take It To The Limit is an Eagles tribute, they were there two years ago, and they packed the house bigger than we've seen in front of that stage in a long time, and they'll be back on Saturday night. So, two, two major headline bands are booked, and lots of other things falling into place over the next few months, so very excited about it.
Okay.
Next month, Mr. Workman can give the update.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything?
I have none.
Bethany and Jenny, Michelle, there's nothing else, we stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you, everybody.